I'm Gail Massett. I'm the district clerk for the Liverpool Central School District. I am going to call the meeting to order at this time. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance if you can.
Pledge of Allegiance, United States of America. To the Republic, for which this stands. A nation, under God, indivisible, infinite in its essence.
The first item of business on the agenda is the administration of the oath of office to board members Nicholas Blaney, Kimberly Martin, and Alex Guider, who were each elected to three-year terms on May 20th. At this time, we'll have Alex and Kim stand. We'll do Nick later. Will each of the new board members please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye. Please state your name. A duly-elected officer of the Board of Education of the Liverpool Central School District. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully and to the best of my ability discharge the duties of the office as a Board of Education member of the Liverpool Central School District. Thank you. Will you all please sign your oaths of office? Thank you.
Ms. Massett, I apologize. Could I please take my oath?
You certainly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Please raise your right hand. Aye. Please state your name.
I, Nicholas Blaney.
A duly-elected officer
A duly-elected officer.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
And to the best of my ability
And to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of the office
Discharge the duties of the office.
As a Board of Education member
As a Board of Education member.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 2.2 is the administration of the oath of the office's superintendent. We are going to do that at his first Board of Education meeting when he takes his position after August 1st. Okay? Item 2.3 is also the administration of the oath of office to the Board of Education student liaisons that will take place at their first meeting in September. The next item on the agenda is the nomination and election of the board president. Is there a motion to nominate someone as board president?
I would like to nominate Mr. Blaney.
Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Melnick? Are there any other nominations? Mr. McKeever?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Salazzo.
Is there a second for that? Mr. Jones? Okay. Can I take a vote for Mr. Blaney? And a vote for Ms. Mar- for Mr.- I'm sorry. For Mr. Salazzo. It's five. Yes, five. Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Blaney. Mr. Blaney, you are now the president. I'm turning the meeting over to you.
As I was talking to Matt Cook, District Superintendent, last night, he said, "I see your reorg meeting is tomorrow night. If someone else is the president, I'll coordinate with them." And I said, "Reminds me of Jed Bartlet on The West Wing saying, 'The polls open in a few hours, so this could all be somebody else's problem by the morning.'" So, this is our reorg meeting. We need to have a vice president. Are there any nominations for the position of vice president? Ms. Melnick?
Ms. Stacy Chilbert.
Okay. There is a nomination for Ms. Chilbert. Are there any other nominations? Mr. McKeever? Ms. Martin? There's a nomination for Ms. Martin. Are there any other nominations for the position of vice president? Can I have a motion to close the polls on the nominations? What's that? I need a motion and a second to close the polls. Okay. Motion by Jasania, second by Ms. Melnick. All those in favor of closing the polls? Okay. We'll start with Ms. Chilbert. All those in favor of Ms. Chilbert as vice president, please raise your hands. There are six votes for Ms. Chilbert. All those in favor of Ms. Martin for vice president, please raise your hands. There are three hands raised. Ms. Chilbert, you are the vice president of the Board of Education for 2025-2026. All right. So, the rest of the meeting is pretty typical for our reorg. We're going to do a series of consent agenda votes in order to They're supposed to be changing board docs to diligent. I think within the next few months. I hope it's not as bad of a platform as board docs. District treasurer, deputy treasurer are going to be taken together at 4.3. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of officers as a consent agenda item? Motion by Ms. Guider, second by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. Five other appointments. This is 5.1 through 5.34. We're at 5.35. Is there a motion to approve other appointments, items 5.1 through 5.34, as a consent agenda item? Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Ms. Melnick. Any discussion? All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. We have number six, authorizations. Is there a motion to approve authorizations, items 6.1 through 6.18, as a consent agenda item? Motion by Ms. Brissette, second by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. Seven, designations. 7.7. Is there a motion to approve designations, items 7.1 through 7.6, as a consent agenda item? Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Ms. Melnick. Any discussion? All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. Bonding of personnel. 8.5. Is there a motion to approve bonding of personnel, items 8.1 through 8.14, as a consent agenda item? Motion by Ms. Brissette, second by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. Nine, other items. 9.5, excuse me. Is there a motion to approve other items, items 9.1 through 9.4, as a consent agenda item? Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. Standing committees. Okay. 10.1, 10.2, and 10.3. We have three committees that really make up the bulk of our committee work as a board. The Audit Committee has is created under a charter and has specific rules under state education law. The Policy Committee is a true board committee. It is subject to open meetings law because it's primarily board members. The Safety Committee is different. That's a district committee. We are simply there as observers, liaisons, listening. That's not open to the public. So, I think if it's all right with everyone, myself and Ms. Chilbert will send out a survey of people asking what your ranking of where you'd like to be. If there's a committee that you absolutely say, "I want to be on that," let me know. And I also have a list of some, a few other possible committees or groups within the nine of us that may help us get work done more efficiently. And we'll see where that goes. So, next, routine business.
Mr. Blaney, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Are we voting on the
Oh, I'm sorry. Audit Committee has their members on here.
We're voting on all three of those separately, right?
So, we're actually not. We'll vote on the Audit Committee because those have, those people need to be appointed. But Policy Committee, once we find out what the, who the Policy Committee members are, we will appoint them, probably on July 29th. And the same thing for Safety Committee. There will also be well, here's the thing about Audit Committee. It still says in the Audit Committee Charter, two board members as liaisons. We have always appointed three. We say we want three. Some of the Audit Committee members say, "There's only supposed to be two of you." And this has been going on for several years. So, we either have to only appoint two, or we have to change the Charter to have three liaisons. So, let's take 10.1. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to appoint the members of the Audit Committee for the 25-26 school year? Audit Committee members are Nick Phillips, David Bowles, John McCully, John Kennedy, and our fresh face, Linda Gaber, who has been a great addition since the time that, I believe it was Mr. McKeever that recommended her come on. Is there a motion to appoint them? Motion by Ms. Chilbert, second by Ms. Melnick. Any discussion? All those in favor? There are eight hands raised. All those opposed? There's one hand raised. All those abstaining? No hands raised. Okay. Let's see. We have now finished the reorg meeting. That's right. I was, I thought, I was so happy with the way we did the meeting, and I thought we were all set. And, you know, there's always something. But that's okay. All right. I will
So, Mr. Blaney, say aye.
Aye.
And state your name.
Nicholas Blaney.
Duly-elected officer of the Board of Education.
A duly-elected officer of the Board of Education.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully and to the best of my ability
And I will faithfully and to the best of my ability
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Board of Education President.
Of the Office of Board of Education President.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
I now turn this meeting back over to you to swear on Ms. Chilbert.
Thank you. So, let's have Ms. Chilbert stand for the oath of office of Board Vice President. Oh, I have to give it. Okay. Repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye. Stacy Chilbert.
A duly-elected officer
A duly-elected officer.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
Of the Liverpool Central School District.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
And to the best of my ability
And the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of the office to which I have been elected.
To the office of which I have been elected.
Congratulations. All right. Now, we can go on to routine business, number 11. 11.8. Is there a motion to approve, acknowledge, and/or accept the routine business items as submitted? Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Ms. Chilbert. Any discussion? Ms. Brissette?
I'd just like some clarification on the intern positions that we have listed for the DO. Is that, are they going to be in other schools, or is this just primarily in the DO? And what are they going to be doing?
You're talking about the administrative appointments on here?
I think Ms. Dolson was going to answer.
Oh. Go ahead, Ms. Dolson.
Sure. I provided Mr. Nolan with this information today. And anything that you see in terms of the interns, they are all, they all are, they all have their regular positions. So, most interns, though, require a district project. So, they're not leaving their buildings or changing positions. We're not having to backfill any of them. So, I think for location, because they could be anywhere in the district, like ESY, our extended school year, that's a district-wide program. So, for the ease of, you know, allowing them to be part of those programs and do projects for the district requirement, that's why the Personnel Office listed the district office. So, we're not adding any administrators or anything like that here. It's really for their program requirements.
Okay. So, all these people that are listed here, they're employed with us, and they have jobs during the day?
Yes. There is the, there is one position where that person is the student in support conduct person at the high school. That's the dean that we have. And that is a full-time, regular position. The rest of them will complete their internship responsibilities outside of their contractual time.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Just had a quick question.
Mr. Salazzo?
The, so, the interns that were, that we appointed last year are not continuing through this year, correct?
Well, they only have a six to 12, or they only have a semester or two semesters, right?
Yeah. West semester. Depending on the program and how they're able to complete the requirements of the program. But it is actually required by the, or by the state for them to complete their program that the district appoint them as interns. You, I do want to let you know, there are a few more, but they don't have their internship certificate yet. So, I can't bring them forward to you until they have their internship certificate. I would like to make mention that we have three interns at our extended school year program that started on Monday, and that was a very great success of the first few days. And those interns are working really hard. So, they're a definite asset to the district. And then, the high school summer program will also have three interns, and they've been working hard to prepare for the students coming there soon. So, they are, not only are we helping develop teacher leadership, but the district is getting some great support in return.
While we're asking questions, but there's one that's SBL slash SDL. Is that a combined certificate that you can pursue?
They're two separate certificates. And the, they have to complete in order to get the SDL. It depends on the program. Some programs have it separate, and some programs have it together.
Oh. And it's always great when we see long-term, longtime employees who are deciding to go through that process and hopefully stay with us. Any other questions? All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. All right. Action items. Well, first of all, I want to acknowledge all of the different gifts and grants that came into the district. And I think we were, it was just quite a generous time. Thank you to the foundation, who gave generously for social-emotional program, Morgan Road Middle School PTO, Soul Road Elementary School PTO. A donation, love to see instruments coming into the music or music department. Don't send your, don't send your, like, junk instruments, though, please, because we don't want, like, rooms full of them. Nice, nice working instruments. So, we thank Mr. Steve Blind, who donated a trumpet, a trombone, and a violin to the LCSD Music Department. I have a feeling maybe those were his kids' instruments. Who knows? Marty Farrell is, Mrs. Marty Farrell, this was interesting, widow of former Liverpool swim coach Mike Farrell, donated a flute, a clarinet, and a trumpet to the LCSD Music Department. It's great when our people remember us and do that. And again, the foundation gave for the new staff/mentor orientation luncheon. So, we couldn't do the stuff we do without the donations. We're now moving on to 12.1. Approval of participation in cooperative energy purchasing service. Is there a motion to adopt the resolutions to participate in the NISMEC bid process for electricity and natural gas? Motion by Ms. Brissette, second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? And hopefully, Mr. McKeever, we can look into some, some long-term plans that may help us out. All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. Moving on with action items, 12.2. Is there a motion to approve the Disc Golf Club as presented? Motion by Ms. Chilbert, second by Ms. Melnick. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Do they need an advisor?
They have to.
I'm just saying, I'm not good, but I'll try. Yeah.
Well, if you're listening, Disc Golf Club people, we would love an invite so I can figure out what it is and what, how to roll it. Can we? Next week, is there a vote? We have a motion and a second, correct? Okay. All those in favor? All right. Unanimous for the Disc Golf Club. Isn't that great? Next on the action items, is there a motion to approve the resolution to participate with the RIC-1 Operations Center, parentheses, RIC, as presented? Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Ms. Melnick. Any discussion? For those that probably were like, "Why are there so many acronyms in one thing?" RIC, Regional Information Center, where we get our internet and is part of OCMBOSIS. And is there, all those in favor? All hands are raised. All hands are raised. Thank you. 12.4. Is there a motion to approve proposed policy revisions as presented? Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. The next and last action item, is there a motion to approve proposed new policies as presented? Motion by Ms. Gider, second by Ms. Brissette. Any discussion? All those in favor? All hands are raised. Thank you. I do not believe there is a reason to go into executive session tonight. Ms. Brissette?
I know we don't have board communication, but in Baldwinville, they lost a student.
Oh, yes.
Ryan James, or James Ryan. And they're doing a tribute tonight. So, if we can take a moment of silence for student B.
Please, yes, a moment of silence for the loss of Baldwinville student. Thank you. It's a reminder how precious life is, right? And it's why we want all of our kids to stay safe over the summer. Announcements, 14.1, August. I'm going to change the announcements here. The next board meeting is July 29th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. It's not, it's tentative, because we have not approved formally the official schedule for the entire year yet. And then, after that, August 5th, and this is fresh and breaking news. Hopefully, if everyone is still available, we will be having a board retreat with Dr. Matt Cook. And I don't know, I think it'll be the first real board retreat in like five or six years, maybe? So, say a prayer that we make it to July or August 5th. And then, we will meet again August 19th. But the full schedule will be on the next meeting. And I'll send it out for you, so you can get it on your stuff. Seeing no further business, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion by Ms. Brissette, second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor? All hands are raised, 6:32. Sure, I'll do. We're adjourned at 6:32 PM. However, I do want to introduce our new superintendent of schools, who is here, in case you didn't see him last time. Or for the folks on our live stream, we have Mr. Rick Chapman with us. And we're excited to have him start. Mr. Nolan will keep holding down the fort for, for the month. And then, August 1st, we will have Mr. Chapman hit the ground running. And he already has been quite involved in, in getting, getting up to speed and getting a start on those relationships that we, that we felt were so important and that we know will build lasting trust and student opportunities and achievement and goodwill. So, have a great night. I think, oh, we have the public hearing. I thought we, I thought we had a record here. So, I will call the public hearing to order at 6:34 PM. So, this is required by state education law that every year, we have a public hearing on our district code of conduct and also our emergency response plan. And I see Assistant Superintendent Dolson is at the mic and ready to present.
Absolutely, and I will try to go as quick as possible. I would like to welcome Ms. Gider to the table. And then, congratulations to those of you who are continuing on our board. And congratulations to those of you with new titles. And of course, Mr. Blaney continuing as our board president. So, congratulations. And so, as Mr. Blaney said, this is required for us to do a public hearing. The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to hear what we, changes that we're making and then provide any comments or questions about these changes to the Board of Education and to the district to respond or reflect upon prior to the board voting on these changes. Looking out in the crowd, most of you are, or all of you are retired school staff or current school staff. So, I probably won't really belabor this too long and we'll go through it quickly. And hopefully, it will still be a record. I'm not sure what our record is, but... So, I'm going to jump right into, starting with our district's code of conduct. There are a few changes in the code of conduct. And so, when we made these changes, we, they, it was because we needed to make sure that we are aligned to current laws and regulations, that we are following best practices for student safety, equity, and accountability. It also helped us provide some clarity for our staff, our students, and our families with some of our, the items in our code of conduct. And I must mention, and I will mention it multiple times, that all of these changes were approved by district legal counsel. So, there are, in our district code of conduct, there were legally issued or initiated changes, meaning our district's legal counsel said, you need to update this and this needs to be fixed and changed. And so, some of those include a piece about the Dignity for All Students Act, better known as DASSA. It also had some language changes about a superintendent's ability to expel a student in very extreme cases. It also updated our protocols with searching students. And really, what this, what this did is emphasize the importance of a reliable informant, meaning we need to make sure that those are giving us the information. It is a reliable source. And of course, defining our procedures for how we conduct our student searches. There is also a clarification in the written appeals process that way, it essentially gives families the opportunity to, if they would like to appeal after 30 days, they have the ability to do so, given any certain unique type of situations. And then, it also updated for our state violations. And those are like our more extreme cases. It updated the range of consequences for those. And then, of course, there were some overall, just like clarifying language changes for more legal accuracy. The district initiated some changes, but of course, those were approved by our legal counsel. One of the things we had to do was update our academic dishonesty to include forgery and cheating separate. Because not all of it fell under the same category. For example, if, you know, a student forged a signature, that's not necessarily cheating, but it's forgery. So, we had to define that a little bit more in our handbook. We had a situation this year that fell under reckless endangerment, but wasn't necessarily part of that full definition. And so, this is in a response to a situation we had this year where it is a potential for bodily harm. Not necessarily bodily harm occurred, but a potential for bodily harm. We also, in our code of conduct, there have been incidences where there's unwanted physical conduct or contact between students that isn't necessarily a minor altercation and isn't really a fight. This is the example where we might be slapboxing or, you know, somebody kind of gives someone a shove and it's not really a fight. It's not really an altercation. It is just unwanted physical contact. So, we needed that, we needed something between that minor altercation or something that is less than that minor altercation or fight. And then, we, a much-needed update to our code of conduct was you'll see a lot of the language is now student-first. And that's the example with students who have disabilities or impairments. Our old language defined, it was disabled students. Or, in the appropriate language, is students-first. So, students with a disability, students with an impairment. So, all of those changes were made. So, really, what happens here is next steps. We have the public hearing. Any questions or considerations can be shared with the Board of Education. Then they'll pass along to us. And then, the board will adopt these. And then, once adopted, we will make sure that we will communicate with our staff and our families. We'll update our handbooks. And then, of course, provide any necessary professional development. Most likely, because the changes aren't that significant, that most buildings will handle that within the building. Just sharing any updates they've made to the student handbook. Before I jump in, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Question? I'm trying to read the room. I will give appropriate wait time.
Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard in the public hearing?
All right.
All right.
May we move on to?
We will keep going, 1.2.
District emergence, the district-wide emergency response plan. And so, this update that we have, there's not very many. Mr. Clisson is here and he helps lead our district's safety. So, they have done a phenomenal job for years. Our safety committee is also very strong and active. So, there weren't really a lot of changes. There was an area where we needed to align to New York State Education Department requirements. We also wanted to make sure that we continue to support our student and staff safety and preparedness. There is a part that we had to adjust to comply with one of our board policies. It needed to match our board policy on remote instruction. We also, in this plan, make sure that we balance transparency, but also the need to keep some things secure. It's not fully detailed, because this is a public document. And then, of course, again, reviewed by the district and then consulted legal before we have presented these changes. So, one of the things that is new, and I'm actually going to, here we go, skip here. So, this is new from state education in effect as of July 1. And there is just new terms and definitions to these terms and new recommended actions. They're not really new, they're just more defined for us. And so, this is effective July 1st. So, we needed to make sure a few of our definitions and terms matched what state ed had said. And so, those specific ones were hold in place, shelter in place, lockdown, and lockout. And that will be something that buildings every year go through, safety procedures at their opening staff meeting. And that we will make sure that our building principals are confident and ready to go and prepared to deliver these specific changes in our language and the actions that we'll take. And then, as I mentioned, everything that we have in these pieces are aligned to state ed. We also, as I mentioned, needed to align our remote instruction plan to what we have at our, in our board policy. So, the two match now. We've approved the board policy, so this shouldn't be anything different or new. It's just helps us be a little bit flexible with instruction in case of emergencies. So, and just kind of summarizing here, and I mentioned it already, we just need to make sure that our plan is detailed enough and to, so that we have consistent responses across our district. But it's general enough to protect our safety from the public and outside. And we also will make sure that everything is clearly outlined for internal staff with more details and more information. And also, of course, provide our families and community with any necessary updates. And of course, collaborate with our local law enforcement. They are a great partner for us and are very important, especially as we move forward with safety as a priority. So, again, same thing, next steps. Once this is approved by the Board of Education, we will make sure that building-level teams are prepared. Make sure we have our staff training. It's required, we always do it. And then, making sure we also continue that partnership with local law enforcement and safety personnel in our community. So, I will pause. And any, this is for the public, questions, comments?
Let's do board members, Ms. Gider.
Just the confidentiality. I fully understand where you say, you know, detailed enough for the proper communications, but general enough. I think I've heard the public sometimes get frustrated that like, it's their children, you know, and they, and it does feel like a panic situation. I, like I said, I understand that idea of there are some things that we can't say for the safety and the sake of the situation. Are you able, just if there are people in the public kind of watching, to elaborate on like, what would be things to help the public better understand why sometimes it may be more general? And not that you're trying to keep information, but...
Yeah, of course. I mean, just an, an example would be like locations in buildings or where our students will go for safety. Just, it's more of like the specific things to protect our students and staff safety. Like, the protocols are public. So, you know, if, if we were to have an intruder in our building and we go into a lockdown, the intruder will know what we mean by lockdown. So, but what the intruder may or may not know are all the other internal protocols. What, I know Ms. Berlinsky maybe just went out in the hallway, but what our, our security guards do as a team, what our administrators do as a team, what are expectations of teachers, where our students are going. Those kind of specific examples are ones that we keep confidential and private within the school to protect.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that question. I know it's hard. It's, but like, something like this is important. And one thing I would compliment our principals on is the communication of families when we do have to do the drills and explaining the drills and explaining the terminology. And since this changed, it will be important for us to communicate to our families again, just making sure they know we are following the state protocols and this is what each of those protocols, protocols are. And those of you on the safety committee, we're hopefully finding out very soon if we receive a grant to get those car, the cards we've talked about before at a board meeting. Positive vibes, send us positive vibes. For those of you who may not know what I'm talking about, they're badges that have a button to them. And if you press, press the button a few times, it will notify any administrator or security team member that there's a crisis in your location. And then, if you press it even more times, the alarm will go off, put the building into lockdown and alert local law enforcement and safety personnel. So, it's, let's hope. I will, I will be, as soon as I find out, I will let us all know. We also had a couple of local officials that I worked with to also try to drum up some donations and support for that. So, hopefully, those will come through as well.
Matt Jones told me he was going to guarantee it. Guarantee that a grant would come through from the state.
I hope so. I hope so. Our staff, our staff need it. If there's one thing, you know, we, one thing that we should be, have a lot of pride for is our specialized programs and special education. And sometimes, students do act out in a way... And sometimes, um, students do act out in a way that we need immediate support, and this will allow us to do that. Our cell phones don't always work in the buildings, there's, you know, dead zones right in LMS, I, LMS is one of the buildings that really sticks out in my mind, and they will have a specialized program next year, so we really wanna make sure that we can get these and get these implemented, because we offer so many great opportunities for our students, but we also wanna make sure that all of our students and staff members are safe. Um, so, it, let's hope, positive vibes.
Importantly, this was used in the Georgia.
Yes.
Incident.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Any other questions from board members first? No?
Okay.
This is a public hearing, any members of the public wish to be heard on the district-wide emergency response plan?
I do see some district administrators here, so I just wanna also make mention that this is a plan also for the district office, and same with the cards, um, we will have them here in the district office as well. Our safety is important, too.
I'm curious, and we can talk about this, uh, another time, but say you're, you're an employee, and, I don't know, I'm, I'm imagining, you, you're a teaching assistant, maybe a substitute teaching assistant, is there a place where you can go and find a quick document that outlines this, that, um, you don't have to read the entire district-wide, but you would know if you were just in the building on a certain?
The, the state safety protocol, or the state safety proto, or emergency responses, those have to be posted, that's part of it, so those have to be posted in all of our classrooms. Um, most buildings have a sub, a substitute teacher folder, um, where they also will include something like this and any other building procedures, um, as well, so.
Okay.
Yep. And, oh, if we get cards, substitutes will also receive card, the cards, the badges.
Great.
That colorful placard that they showed there, I, I've had... If you could go back to that, uh, the placard that they showed there is based on what they call the I Love You Guys Foundation, and we're, their, New York State is trying to align with basically every other state, yeah, and we have these, these will be posted in every occupied space in the district, I just received them last week from BOSI's Printing, so, 11 by 17, anybody who's not familiar with it can read it in every one of our rooms in the district, so they'll be distributed next week.
Great, thank you, Mr. Clisson. Mr. Jones?
Uh, unrelated note, um, we were giving, uh, members of the board yesterday a, a moment-by-moment, uh, update of, of all the work that Mr. Clisson and, and the O and M team were doing, uh, in response to whatever the heck blew through Bayberry, uh, yesterday. Uh, I actually live on the other side of the high school, and I didn't notice a whole lot, but I heard that Bayberry was like obliterated in certain parts, I don't know what happened, but, um, a huge shout-out to you guys, and thank you for, for going out there right away and, and making everything look brand-new again, so, you guys do great work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clisson is very humble, but he, um, definitely worked a lot of time on his day off, so, he had, it's not really a day off when you're here for well over four hours, so, thank you, Mr. Clisson.
Rain, shine, or snow, right? Um, okay, are there, uh, there are no further comments? Um, I just wanna use this before we, uh, close the public hearing to talk about two items. On the code of conduct, we will probably, I, I hope we, I hope we don't have to have any, uh, board appeals of student discipline, uh, this next year, but, um, uh, let's say we do, uh, maybe. Um, inevitably, the conversation of restorative practices comes up, and how we can, um, make sure that discipline is an educational tool and not a punitive, um, punitive item. Um, if, if we wanted to look further into that, or, or incorporate that, that needs to be in the code of conduct. Um, and so, if that were to happen, I, I, I would suggest probably a small group that, that would look into that, but, um, I, I think that's really important. Um, and we used to have some, um, restorative practices for certain offenses, um, and because they were not incorporated in the code of conduct, it was as easy as, um, no, we're not gonna do that anymore. And, um, that's, that's unfortunate, you know? Um, the second one is, as far as emergency response, I would love if, um, we could bring in for a presentation, someone who I talked to actually last year, and, um, is really a, a renowned expert in, um, school gun violence, um, her name is Dr. Jaclyn Childkraut, she was a professor at SUNY Oswego, and she's now, um, the head of the Gun Violence Consortium for the Rockefeller Institute, um, for New York State, but she happens to be, um, local to us, not in Liverpool School District, but, um, adjoining, um, and she, um, she has , uh, different, um, perspectives from the, uh, academic, uh, side of things, you know, we, we obviously, um, are very appreciative of our law enforcement and, um, everything that we, we do as far as safety and security, but I, I think it might be worthwhile to, to bring her in, and, and, um, she often has these grant programs where she will come into districts, and at no cost to the district, she and her team do quite a bit of work, um, as far as, um, uh, an analysis of, of, of safety planning, and I think she did that exact thing in Syracuse City, um, for, for quite a while, so, just two things to think about. Um, all right, I will close the public hearing if there's no one else. Okay, the public hearing is, oop, closed at 6:56 PM. All right, have a great night, thank you for being here.